For our regular scheduled meeting, we'd like to thank you. What a great crowd. We're so excited to see all of you here tonight. We'll call our meeting to order and the invocation and pledge is again Vice Chair Mr. Les Hitt.
Please stand, bow your heads, as we ask the Lord to please bless this group, to give us knowledge, to give us wisdom, so that the decisions we make will be decisions that are in the best interest of all the citizens of Newberry County. And we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, again, we're so thankful to see all of you here tonight. We have first on our agenda, public appearances. And the first on that list is Ms. Abigail Fuller of the Newberry County Library System.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, and thank you to the whole council for seeing me today. I just wanted to give you an update as I just passed my two-year anniversary for starting at Newberry County. And it has been a wonderful opportunity and a wonderful experience. But we did want to let you know some other things. My board members here who also deserve a lot of accolades are here. Ms. Shirley Seaver, who's our board chair, Ms. Sandra Oliver, and Ms. Lila Caldwell. We just wanted to let you know what we've been doing. So some of what we've done is we, after the first six months I was here, evaluating where the library was because some of our infrastructure in terms of our technology was very outdated and wasn't serving the public. Some of our computers and things were 2012s. So we have gotten through a combination of working with our budget, also an ARPA grant that we were able to get through the Institute for Museum and Library Services and the state library. We were able to, we're in the process right now, after all the parts came in, of replacing all of our computers at Whitmire and at the Newberry branch. So now we can have people who come in and when they want to fill out a job application, when they want to print, you know, really be able to help them do the services that we would like them to do. We have also upgraded our technology in terms of our meeting rooms. So if anybody would like to come use the library now, they have a big computer screen. One is movable, so we can use it in all parts of the library. One is in our small conference room. It does include a complete sound system with Zoom, so we can host businesses and other things at the library that might need to use it. Basically, our upgrades, we were trying to be very systematic so that we were making sure we were benefiting the community as much as we could. And as we know, with COVID, Zoom is a big thing now, or being online meetings, so we wanted to make sure we were offering that. We also have two new digital signs, one in our lobby and one over our circulation desk, where we can advertise not only the library events, but events that are going on in the community, and that's at the main Newberry branch. We don't have those yet at Whitmire, but maybe in the future we'll get those. But we do have a 60-inch computer at Whitmire that we can move around the building to do outreach and events. Then we also were able to, we're implementing right now, a mobile print. So if anybody ever had the request, because we get it all the time, that they want to print from their cellphone, they'll be able to come to the library to do that. And also have self-checkout, as well, that you can use in multiple languages, as well as your print release. So if we have Spanish-speaking patrons in there, they can turn it into Spanish and be able to understand the screen better and what they're doing. So we're really trying to build in service to our, you know, our library services, things we already had, but trying to do even more. We are also, let's see, we have also done a hybrid approach. So I think COVID taught us, even though it was already a well-developed trend within the libraries, COVID really taught us that you have to have, be able to deliver service and resources, whether it's in person and the great physical items we've always had, DVDs, books for all ages, but also more digital resources. So we have done some strategic buying. We're getting ready, in addition to launching a new website that will allow room reservation. It will allow, you can check your library record. You'll also be able to do event registration and everything. And it just is a really revamped website for us. You will also be able to get all of our list of resources and some of the ones we're just beginning to do as we're launching our first streaming service. So with your library card, you can stream through your Roku. So just something different, and it offers educational, as other movies and things like that. It also autos, offers eBooks and audiobooks. We are also launching digital magazines, because a lot of publishers now will not publish in print. So this will still give us the same great ability to access those. And we are just launching a bunch of other things, including genealogy research, since that is a big one for Newberry County, and a database for that, a database where we can set up online trainings. So if we want to do some basic online trainings for people to learn how to use a computer, we'll have that available where they can log in and do that from our website as well. So just creating that one-stop shop to really benefit the community. We are also increasing our outreach. This summer alone, we had 1,500 kids and families attend our summer reading program, which is the biggest we've ever had. And we were able to, through a grant with our South Carolina First Steps partnership, we had a library carnival, and it was great in our parking lot. We got to offer carnival rides. We had the bouncy houses and the obstacle courses, but it was a reward for the kids who completed the summer reading program. Anybody could attend, but we also did have registration, and we've had the most we've ever had completed as well, and that was 115 kids got the rewards and stuff for that. So we're working with our partnerships with the public schools, with the, even the private schools in the area, and really trying to increase that reading program for the kids. We also have weekly story time from zero to four at our Newberry branch. We're looking to branch out for different age groups. We have great success. We usually have about 20 kids there for that one every week. And we just in December had Santa events where Santa, you got to come to the library at each branch, make an ornament, and then you got to hear Santa read you a story while you have milk and cookies. And then you got to take pictures with them. And we waited till school was out. And we had 66 at Whitmire, and we had 100, over 150 at Newberry.
Wow.
So that's really, really great numbers in terms of really trying to reach out and being in the community. We are working on building an adult program in terms of outreach. We have offered some events. We had a museum exhibit about civil rights, Mr. Cecil Williams. He came and spoke. We also have had poetry events from members of the community. Some authors have come, and we have some more coming. So, and we're looking at possibly doing an adult summer reading program at the same time we do the children's summer reading program. So just trying to get out there and increase and find out what people in the community want. We are also looking at doing nutritional classes, financial literacy classes for teens and adults, computer training, different things like yoga for physical fitness, maybe some other ideas. And we're looking at actually trying to bring an escape room, a mobile escape room to the library, to get in with teens, but also to have adults be able to do that. So just different things in the community that we can have events going on all the time. So that, we have a lot of great, we've had a lot of increase in, even from even before COVID, in how many people are using the library. We're able, we have new security gates. We're able to count the people coming in better. And we, we feel like we're at a really good point where we're developing the library program and the services even more at both branches. And hopefully, we're becoming even better service to the community than we were before. But really just recognizing, you know, COVID has changed a lot of things. We were already on the rise with technology and digital, but just really making sure that even if tomorrow things change, and we unfortunately, hopefully, never have to go back to isolation, but if we did, we can still support the needs of Newberry County, not just one demographic through physical items, but all demographics, even the ones that are more interested in digital. So that was my update for you.
All right. Any questions or comments from council members?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact you bringing a lot of new stuff to the library that, that's going to pique the interest of everybody.
Well, thank you. We just want to be about service. I mean, that's what a library is, and it's changed so much over the years. I remember being, growing up, and I grew up in a small town. I grew up in Gilbert, South Carolina. We were only 500 people. We didn't have anything there, a lot less than Newberry. And I had to go to Lexington County to use the library. And I just think it can do so much for you. And it can be a great space, but it has changed a lot where it provides services for you. We had rental assistance from the state end, and we had a lot of people come in, and the state was able to contact those people and help them with their rental assistance and everything. So we're just trying to do more classes and more group meetings and just serve as, not only outreach in the traditional sense of it being a library program, but also a place where people connect and we can make sure we can help those who are in need.
It sounds like you really are providing a service to the entire community, and thank you for all you're doing. What is the website address?
The website? It's going to be a new one, and it's coming now. We have the UC More, which is a horrible website. Please don't go there. We, we are getting another one, and it is actually going to be branded for Newberry County, and it's coming live in just a few weeks.
Okay, and that's, that's probably a good place that we could have a link in our county website to your library website.
And we also plan to do different, I mean, we're going to take all the resources that we've previously gotten from the state, but that were never in one place on our website, and make it so that you don't have to go to all these multiple websites. It's one place. And also create guides and training and everything that will all be accessible from the website, so that you don't get confused. And I just feel like the more barriers you have of, you have to go over here, you have to go over here, no, you have to go to this website. It makes it easier for people to understand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's a great community service you're offering, and to get it upgraded through a grant is just awesome, too, that you reached out to get available funds.
Well, thank you. We're, we're trying to do that with a lot. We've also been working on a Spanish collection that is in truly bilingual. So every word in the book is translated into Spanish, and then also, but has the English, and then also in Spanish as well, since we have a big Hispanic population in Newberry. And then that's why we also want, you know, bilingual. We also, and I didn't mention it, and I apologize, we got new computers through children's computers. So ones for elementary learning, ones for like middle, late elementary, and then another one's truly bilingual. So we'll be even able to serve those children who maybe that's not their mainly, Spanish might be their main language and English their second. So, but we've been really, the grants have been wonderful, and I've appreciated that. But also just the support of our, my board, the support of our friends at the library group who did donations for the technology in the meeting rooms and the digital signs. And it really is just about figuring out how to get out in the community and how to get people to hear what you're offering, and then trying to tailor it to what they need.
That's great.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of you for your support. We couldn't do it without you.
Job well done. Thank you.
And if you're ever in the area, feel free to stop by, and I'll be glad to give you a tour.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, under public appearances, is Doug Height with the Newberry Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to give you a quarterly update. And first, I'd like to welcome Councilman Cease and get to know you better through our programs and all through the year. Krista, our executive director's here with me. I'm Doug Height. I'm chairman of the Newberry Soil and Water Conservation Board. One thing that I've appreciated since we had our financial fiasco a few years ago, the quarterly report that we've started giving you all has been wonderful for us, too, as an organization, because it really makes us reflect on what we are doing every quarter. So it's, it's a win-win both ways. First, we had our banquet in November, and we had over 100 participants. Kirby Player from Clemson spoke, and Diana Moore, who was our commissioner, the South Carolina Commissioner School up in Clemson, we sponsored, and she gave her report. And we had a good evening. Satterwhite Farms was our main winner of the evening for the Willoughby Peace Prize Award, which goes to the outstanding conservationist for the year. So they won it 30 years ago, and they've got the next generation in place. So the things that they have done was very well-deserving. However, they got another generation coming behind them, so there'll probably be 30 more years, and they'll be getting that award again. We just had our annual grinding of the greens. This year, we, where we had 52 trees dropped off at Cromley Ford, and they were mulched up and given away as mulch for the citizens of Newberry. A point of interest for y'all, February 7th at Springfield Place at 7:30, we are having our legislative breakfast. It's where y'all have a chance to come in and talk with us. Our new National Resource Conservation Services find out where the money that the government's appropriating to us is going in county. A chance to meet with Representative Duncan's people, hopefully some city council folks. So it's an opportunity, Ronnie Cromer, Mr. White, will hopefully be there. So it's a chance for everybody to roundtable a little bit and talk to everybody. So that's February 7th at 7:30 at Springfield Place. One of our biggest programs are still running with this, the Feral Hog Program. This is the wild hogs in Newberry County. And we're working with NRCS, ATHIS, and USDA. And currently, we've been in two and a half years on this project, and we've eradicated 580 hogs so far off 26 farms. This program is going through 2023, and we're looking for more participants. So if you have any inkling that there's hogs in your area, contact us. We're working with the University of Georgia that is doing the trapping and the recording and the disposal of them. But it's been a huge success. We hope it's going to be continued through a USDA grant, but I'm hoping DNR is going to kick in to help us with that some more. And March 9th, we're sponsoring a lecture at Piedmont Tech with Dr. Horn, who is a biologist from Newberry College, and he's going to be speaking on native species that are in Newberry County. So if anybody has any interest in that, that's going to be March 9th. One of our annual events is the movie night on the farm. This year, it'll begin at Sessler's Farm on the corner of College Street and 121. And it's free. It's May 2nd, and as soon as the sun sets, we turn on the movie. And it's outdoors, bring your lawn chair. And last year, we had right at 100 participants, and we have a good time, so. And our biggest event was camp conservation, and this year it's going to be the June, the third week in June. And last year, we had 37 kids, ages 6 through 12. It's a week-long camp. Krista's wore out by the end of it, and it's only $45, and the kids are there from 9 till 3. So they, and the programming is fantastic. We get participation from foresters, DNR, everybody comes in and helps us out. And then our biggest event, coming up with the Keep Newberry County Beautiful subsidiary of our organization, is going to be our summer fair. Again, we're in the process of planning, and that's going to be August 24th through the 27th. And last year, we had over 10,000 people showed up for the first fair in almost 20 years. We hope it's going to be bigger and better, and the profits that are coming from this go through Newberry County Beautiful, and are given in scholarships and other beautification projects. So if there's anybody in the communities in the county that wants something done, just let us know. Krista will start planning that. In front of you, I gave you a annual report for this past year. Our first Earth and Sky Photo Contest is in that, the winners of it, and we've started our second one. And that, all those, what do you call it, contest photos are due October of this year, and they are only non-professional photographers, and there's cash rewards and a little bit of publicity, so. Krista's been certified now to teach in the schools called Project Wet and Project Learning Tree. Last year, she visited five schools and was able to reach 900 students with some of her programming. And we hope she gets into more of them this year, so. We're blessed to have Krista. She's a go-getter, a planner, and nothing gets left unturned with her. Our membership drive is underway. We currently have 20 participants who've signed up, and we've collected $3,400, which goes towards our programming and stuff beyond our budget that we can afford to do. One of our book, biggest things that's happening now is our book drive, and we've gotten some state publicity out of this, is used books are brought into our office on Kendall Road, and Krista boxes them up, and she mails them to veterans, hospitals, disabled veterans, so they have something to use, to read or look at. So if you, any of you in the audience have any used books that are in decent shape, would like to get them out of your house, there is a place for them to go. We're also partnering with seven other counties right now for our anti-litter campaign to start up in April, and it's called Team Up to Clean Up. Our Keep Newberry County Beautiful group is really starting to do a good job trying to get some of the roadways cleaned up, the city cleaned up. But it takes volunteers to make this program work. It takes more than two people to go do, do a major cleanup. But that's something that's starting to really catch on. And then last is next week, we have our state conference in Greenville. It's where we, all 43 counties come in with their associations. We have a state meeting. This year, our main speaker is going to be the Lieutenant Governor, who's going to speak the morning of our meeting. And Ben Sessler, who is our vice chair of our board, is going to become our new state president. So we're excited about that. Ben is also leading the Legislative Caucus for our state Newberry, state Soil and Water Conservation Board. So he's had a lot to do with structuring legislation to go to, before the State House. So Ben's a great asset to our county. You had any questions? I appreciate your time.
If I got any question, I just appreciate y'all being true to your word about coming back quarterly and doing those reports. That is such a blessing, and I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And then a contact from my former career contacted me about the books program from WLTX, and I was able to get in touch with Ben, and so hopefully, hopefully, they'll, they'll do a story or something on you guys. I think that's amazing.
Yep. Krista, Krista does, gets these brainstorms, and we just let her go with it, so.
Gotcha.
But we appreciate everything. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Unless there is an exception, we can take both items in one motion. Hearing none. Is there a motion that we accept the consent agenda? Motion all the way down the line. We'll do Mr. Cease and Mr., with the motion and Mr. Hitt for the second. Is there discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is a presentation of a proclamation, and we certainly want to acknowledge someone. You talk about someone who doesn't get near enough credit for what they do. Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed additions. I, I struck off additions, but I kept moving by it. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion that we accept the agenda as published? Motion by Reverend Curry, second by Mr. Reader. Is there discussion on the adoption of the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor. By show of hands. Opposed likewise. It carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hitt, for that great catch. Now we have a proclamation for an under-recognized group of folks, and so we want to take a moment and recognize our coroner's office and our fine coroner and their dedicated staff. So we want to have this proclamation and recognition and appreciation of National Coroner and Medical Examiners Week, which is January 27th through February 2nd of this year. Our proclamation reads, whereas the Newberry County Coroner's Office and its dedicated staff are committed to Newberry County, whereas Newberry County Council wishes to extend our appreciation for the work that the Newberry County Coroner's Office does to thoroughly investigate causes and manners of death, as well as, and perhaps most importantly to me, is serve the families of Newberry County. And whereas Newberry County Council does hereby proclaim the week of January 27th through February 2nd, 2023, as National Coroner's Medical Examiner's recognition, with January 29th being the focus day. That will be done this date on the 18th of January 2023. Is there a motion that we approve this proclamation? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We have a proclamation. If you would like to bring your, bring your staff up.
This is certainly a job that takes 24/7. Death is not a respect or a person's nor time, and so we just want to present you with this and thank you for what you do. Thank you so much. You want to say anything?
I appreciate the support. We're always here for you 24/7.
I'll let you know before I need you.
Yeah, nobody makes enough point. All right. Item number five on our agenda is a Resolution 02-23, which is a resolution declaring intent to reimburse expenditures for certain capital projects with the proceeds of this not to exceed 35,000, I'm sorry, 32, 35,250,000 general obligation funds. Karen, you want to brief us on this?
This resolution is given to council now. The $35,250,000 is the proceeds that will be used from the bond for the capital project sales tax, projects that were on the ballot back in November. There are some items that will need to be purchased or preliminary things that may have to have expenses before the bond proceeds come in, which will be around late May, the 1st of June. This resolution authorizes council to be able to use council's funds and be reimbursed with the bond funding once it's received. There are probably a few other municipalities that may have expenses prior to the bond funding coming in as well. And so this allows them to use their funds and be reimbursed for the CPS dividends.
I would speak specifically, there are some options on some property that if we don't renew it, would expire before this was over. And now that the property will be associated with a major project, we certainly don't want to have to pay an increased amount for that. So it's wise to move forward and get this taken care of while we can do that. So is there a motion that we approve this resolution? Mr. Hitt makes the motion. Mr. Shuley makes the second. Is there discussion about this item? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is appointments. Does any council member have appointments tonight?
No.
I have one. Mr. Blair Long, who is, gosh, a forever member of the Bush River Fire Department, has decided not to continue on the Board of Rural Fire Control. Retired Chief, Newberry Fire Chief Keith Minnick, who was a member of that fire department, has agreed to stand in his place as a representative from Bush River Fire Department. I, I think that's a great choice for Newberry County, and so that is with great privilege that I nominate Mr. Keith Minnick to the Board of Rural Fire Control. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Hitt. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. That mere motion carries unanimously. Are there any other appointments? I just, I don't know if he might be watching or not, but I just say Blair serves so well on that board, and I'm so grateful for his dedication, not just to that board, but to that community that he loves with a passion. And so we're grateful and blessed by his efforts, and I think he's continuing on the fire department. Yes. All right. Any other appointments? Hearing none. It's time for public comments. Signed up for public comments, the first signed up is Mr. Eric Boyer.
I just want to thank the council for, for the time. I just wanted to come before you all and ask if there's any laws or statutes on the books currently that might not be getting enforced to deal with abandoned mobile homes, abandoned vehicles, any such properties like that, where the county is no longer collecting revenue from these being registered. They're just sitting and rotting in our county. They are not only an eyesore, but they are a health hazard. Uh, they are not only an eyesore, but they are a health hazard. Um, I'm gonna, if I may approach, if I may approach, I've got. This is one that I pass every day, as a lot of people do.
All right. I'm looking at.
Clearly, no one's living in that. I, when I took the photograph, there were, there were animals that came out of it. So it is a health risk, right? And I don't know what the rate of rabies is in Newberry County, but there's vermin living in these homes, right? Somebody was living in them, someone was renting them, the county was collecting revenue and they're not now. And they're just, you know, I I was not part of, I should have been, uh, the discussion about the five-year economic plan. And the group that's done that, I'm new to Newberry County, but I'm a South Carolinian. Um, the Newberry County Board with with Samsung and and all the other industries coming in has has done a phenomenal job, to be applauded. However, if I were a business owner in a crazy high tax rate state and I wanted to relocate for cheaper labor and and better tax situation and I came here and I drove through our county, there are parts of it with stuff like this that I would say, I don't want to live there. I'm sorry, that's just true, right? We we can do better. So it's cars, it's abandoned mobile homes. The other thing is tires. I got this and I called this number and I gave all the information that was asked and nothing was ever done. Not 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 one thing. And the place that, one of the places that I called about decided to get rid of them would be a good idea to burn them. So that's obviously not a good idea, right? So I just, um, I I I come to you really uneducated. I maybe there are laws on the books and it's just a matter of, you know, um, the constituents in the in the county, you know, showing up and and saying it's important to them. I know that you all, I I can see already that you represent the county well. You put the safety and needs of the people as your priority and I I applaud you for that. So that's really all I I I have. I I would, I would say one, one additional thing. Um, has there, has there, and this is a rhetorical question, I know the answer, but is there any appetite in this room to redirect the eighteen-wheel pulp trucks, eighteen-wheel traffic that goes down Main Street Prosperity somewhere else? Because I don't see prosperity ever being the cute little town it could be with those trucks going up and down that road. Has there ever been anything brought forward?
It's been worked on by the town of Prosperity.
For thirty years?
No, well, they they had a meeting last month with county, the town council. They brought it up.
Okay, good.
I was there.
Thank you for that response. I'd, yeah, that would be a, that's because that's a state road and a town issue.
Okay, okay, okay.
Would you mind providing your contact information to our acting county administrator so we could, we we can get you some more information and kind of engage, this isn't really the format for back and forth, so, but we'd be happy to get you some more information.
It sounds like I've got an ally with Mr. Height. And I need to reach out to him as well.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, sir. We appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Uh, next on our uh signed up for public comments is Sharon Browning.
Yes, sir. Thank you kindly for um letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it. Um, so I did write this down, so I'm just going to read it.
Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine.
Okay, my name is Sharon Browning and I live on Cypress Point Drive in District Six. Several other concerned neighbors are also in attendance. Mike and Nisi Odeller here. Um, my address can only be a church, be accessed via Scurry Church Road, which you may have heard of um from other members of the council and or the CTC and or Mr. Pizzano. Um, my mission is to talk to you about the declining conditions of this road and the need for SCR, which is Scurry Church Road, and I'm going to use SCR if you don't mind, um, to be rehabbed so residents can drive safely instead of being forced to the middle or wrong side of the road to avoid the prolific potholes and deteriorating road edges. This road was originally dirt and became a tar and chip, if I am not mistaken.
Tar and gravel, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you. Tar and gravel, road and still is a tar and gravel road and hasn't been serviced since approximately two thousand and eleven. Um, so that's a pretty long time for a tar and gravel road. Um, we um need funds, apparently they need to be allocated by the CTC. I talked to the CTC yesterday. Mr. Tim Carroll, the chairman of the CTC, told us that county council would need to address this as they have no funds to do anything immediate and no immediate road work and also no legal obligation to provide funds, which kind of like set me back just a little bit. It is, however, documented that the CTC selects and approves projects to be funded in y'all's documentation. So I don't quite get the comment and how it could be made that there's no legal obligation. Um, perhaps y'all could explain that to me and I would explain it too. I have multiple emails from residents that I've collected, okay, that we're trying to keep in communication with about the problems. But the county um is represented here by the council, appointed the CTC, according to what I read. Um, as taxpayers, it's our understanding that the obligation of the county is to maintain safe roads for tenants. The CTC says the council also, this is kind of different, has a a large one-point-six-million-dollar project that they want funded, or they have funded, and that they would need the council to re-prioritize in in order for them to take on the SCR project. Like you'd have to like say, okay, put this a little bit back there and do Scurry Church Road, okay? I I don't understand, again, politically, how exactly that goes in and out, but um I sure would like to. I'd also like to know what that project is and is it a priority of a Scurry Church? I probably, I would honestly say that it probably wouldn't be in my mind, okay? Um, do I need to explain where Scurry Church Road is? Would that help anybody?
It's a chapel, is it?
It is, it is. Anybody need an explanation of where Scurry Church is? You do? You want me to?
He does.
Say yes or no? All in favor of an explanation, say aye.
I'd like an explanation.
Pardon?
Yes, I'd like to.
Okay, so thirty-four and thirty-nine meet in what is considered chapels, okay, which is a stop sign. Okay, so we're very rural. Um, it uh runs between thirty-four and thirty-nine and chops off that corner, okay, where thirty-four and thirty-nine come together. It probably isn't a mile from the Buzzard Roost Bridge Dam area on thirty-four. It runs all the way to Newberry when you turn away from the dam. And at the other end of Scurry Church, it abuts thirty-nine, which runs through chapels proper, crossing thirty-four and onward into Saluda. And the other way it goes up to Cross Hill, passing the newly paved fifty-six, okay, and into Clinton. I tell you this because we are all very isolated out there. There's nothing but a Dollar General on one corner in chapels. There is a trailer to post office on one corner and a gas station, okay? If I need to walk somewhere because I can't use the road, I have a two-point-five-mile walk to see if I can get it at Dollar General, which probably wouldn't suit my needs. Um, if I want to, want to go for a car repart, ports, parts or anything, I'd have to go to Newberry or Greenwood. And a proper grocery store is at a minimum fifteen to twenty miles. And the nearest Lowe's, of course, is Newberry and Greensburg, Greensburg, Wood, sorry. I used to live by Greensburg. Approximately a year ago, its condition was much better. Old Dominion slash Duke Energy, and I've gotten both names from folks, um began building a high transmission line that crosses Scurry Church Road. Even, they travel on it even for approximately a quarter of a mile when you come out. At one point on their right-of-way, it's on Scurry Church Road, you have to go down the road and approach the right-of-way at another turn, okay? Um, additionally, they decided they were going to log some spots on Scurry Church Road. And while there is a dirt road that accesses Highway thirty-four also um was accessible, okay, and they, and the loggers have come to thirty-four and have logged around thirty-four. And there is a highway there called Old Landfill Road, not highway, dirt road called Old Landfill Road. And they're using Old Landfill Road and not Scurry Church, but they didn't use Old Landfill Road when they decided they were going to turn on Scurry Church Road, okay, and drag it towards thirty-nine. So they took it that way towards thirty-nine and they tore up the road pretty good. Um, also, I was told that before we actually moved into that area, that an installation of a gas line had occurred, which has all hastened deterioration of Scurry Church Road. Um, one of my neighbors also told me she was speaking to a sheriff's deputy one day. Um, and when when a logging truck truck decided to come through and they left a deep trail of mud and guck all over the road and the officer um said to her that she, he would take care of that because the logger's supposed to clean up up after themselves. And he apparently did because the next day, the roadway had been cleaned up, okay? However, it doesn't do anything for the fact that they're very, very heavy and they're tearing up the roadways. And so I can understand Prosperity's problems, okay, with logging trucks coming through. And there's lots of them on thirty-four and thirty-nine, but they don't need to cut through Scurry Church Road in order to take off that corner either, okay? Not, so, so I I wondered if the county seeks restitution for roads being damaged by utilities and loggers. That's one of my like questions. Is there something that gives money back into the community to take care of what they've torn up, okay? It's not um my car tearing it up. I mean, I do ride on it, but I'd have to ride a lot on it to tear it up. Um, we have been in touch with the Newberry, with some Newberry officials, including um Mr. Joe White, Pastor Johnny McScurry and Mike Pizzano. Um, we held meetings in December and Newberry officials representing fire EMS roads and permits were invited. Two people attended, the fire chief who had to open the be, building was there and the gentleman who handles permits, who I knew his name, but I don't anymore, and Pastor Scurry also attended. It would take about five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to do a full-depth restoration per Mike Pizzano, um, and that's what Mike feels needs to be done with Scurry Church Road. Um, he has promised to try and repave areas and fill potholes with more than cold patch as we attempt to limp along. The freeze thaw cycle that has happened this winter hasn't helped our conditions. There was an eighteen-inch pothole that was filled in December of twenty twenty-two. It is currently um breaking apart. I have pictures of the pothole. If anybody would like to see pictures of the pothole, and I'm sorry, I don't have them printed, so I can only show you my phone. Uh, somebody just sent them to me. I didn't have them until this evening. Um, Mike has told me that he's decided to scrape the road edges to try and ensure that the water can run off of the road, um, which will be helpful. However, at the same time, our edges are deteriorating and the road's getting narrower and narrower. And two cars can't just, you know, come down the road and pass each other on that road. You're going to have to think about it. You're going to have to move to the side in at different areas of the road in order to not hit each other, okay? Um, we have collected emails from folks in the areas that could not attend this meeting. There are many summer residences, so it's not possible for me to get everybody some emails, but I wanted to read just a few email excerpts. Scurry Church is in awful disarray. The road is an obstacle course back and forth from one side to the other, which is a safety concern because, you know, at night you can see somebody's headlights, but in the day, you can see the pothole, but not the headlights. So um people are coming around curves. There is, there is curvy parts to the road and a little hill and everything and you don't know somebody's there, okay? With logging and utility trucks, patching doesn't stand a chance. Um, nothing significant's been done to the roads since they were paved in the nineties, which was a comment. And however, Mr. Pizzano did um correct that and tell me that in twenty-eleven that there was a topping put on Scurry Church, okay? But it's an eleven-year-old topping of a tar and gravel road. Um, it's used by both local and non-local traffic to cut through. It saves you approximately four miles, but they cut through between thirty-four and thirty-nine. We were brainstorming that and just as an aside, we were brainstorming, how do you fix that? A sign that says no through traffic would be an interesting sign. And I just wondered if it could include um video enforced, right? And um take a picture of them, send them a couple, you you spread the word that that you're being ticketed, right? If you, at one point you come in and, you know, two minutes later, you're out on the other side. Because if you, when you correct this road situation, people will know it. And they'll think, oh, wow, I can go down through there without breaking my axle, right? So it was just a thought. Um, there, it's very narrow and has several blind curves and one never knows where one will meet oncoming vehicle on the wrong side of the road. Um, there's a possibility of losing control. Um, several areas would not sustain bilateral traffic without causing damage to vehicles, much less to the drivers and passengers of said vehicles, okay? And and that's the end of my dissertation about Scurry Church Road. Um, we obviously would like something to be done. I I do want to thank Mike. He has been extremely gracious and he's been dealing with my husband in emails since May um about Scurry Church Road and he's been sending patching crews out there, but again, it, you know, it's not going to do it. So um we have, you know, more than just my road, Cypress Point is my road. Um, we have more than just Cypress Point accesses Scurry Church Road. And again, it is the only road to get to our homes, the only road to get back there. Okay? So I'd like to understand who I'm supposed to address because I didn't think I was going to come to the council meeting tonight, but I did because the CTC said you need to go to council. Yet I believe what I'm reading is that CTC is the responsible party. Um, I don't know. So there's, there's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for the comments and and Mike would continue to be the point on that, although I'm glad I, were, was, were you and I, was I emailing back and forth with you earlier?
No, you were emailing with Sarah Newsom.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't remember who it was. There were some concerns about patrol and I think we were able to ease some of those concerns. And then um we have a place Holloway Cove Road, right up the, the next curve.
Yep, she's on Holloway Cove, so Sarah's on Holloway Cove.
I know that area very well.
And Sarah's down there and she gave me the pictures of the pothole, eighteen-inch pothole.
My dad used to be the fire chief and rescue squad chief up there for many, many years until he remarried, so.
Okay.
Uh, certainly empathize with you, uh, not just sympathize, empathize, because when we go up there, we go down those roads. So I I I do understand what you're saying, but we will continue to work through Mike uh and do everything within our power to try to offer some assistance.
Okay, and we'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything that we can get, we'd appreciate it.
Anybody else want to say anything or comment in any way?
Do you like to see the picture?
I can, I can understand truly, because you live in in that area, I can truly understand what you're saying and um we truly go try to work with the um Transportation Commission on trying to get some of these roads taken care of.
I have one more thing I have to say, okay? Yesterday at the CTC meeting, it was, it was like, okay, we we get money in, but you know, we can only do so much with that money. We only have so much money. And I said, you know what? I run a household. I only have so much money to pay my bills too, okay? But I have to, I have to have an emergency fund over here, right? When my um heat doesn't work anymore, okay? Or when a water pipe breaks and destroys something, I need to have an emergency fund at my disposal. And if I can't make it with my emergency fund, I have to rob Peter, pay Paul, okay? So I mean, all of you have those situations, all of you know exactly what I'm talking about. I gotta believe you do anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
So anyway, I just want to say that I just believe that there should be an emergency fund, okay, for situations that occur like, um, so Holloway Cove Road, Doc Holliday, Holloway Road just got repaved. Doc Holliday Road, Road needed repaved prior to Scurry Church Road, okay? No, it did not. It was in great condition to what Scurry Church Road is. However, it was approved two years ago, okay? Well, if now I'm getting on a list for two years from now and I'm already in trouble, eighteen-inch potholes is pretty deep, right? I'm already in that trouble, okay? Then what do I do? But Doc Holliday got pa, Holloway got paved, okay? It goes out and it dead ends, but it got paved. So there's grand, brand-new pavement coming right up Scurry Church Road and Scurry Church Road is sitting, is sitting there where everybody's passing. Everybody has to use Scurry Church Road. So I'm I'm looking for that emergency fund a little bit too, like, where is So I'm, I'm looking for that emergency fund a little bit too, like, where is it? Again, I don't know how y'all set your finances up. I just know.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much for your comments. We appreciate y'all being here tonight and those who came with you in support as well.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is uh an executive session. Uh, we have uh two uh items for executive session. Uh, the first is uh for contract negotiations and the second is for a personnel matter. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, we stand moved into executive session. We will be uh as brief as possible and try to get back to you as quickly as possible.
It caught on fire just the other day. It's even more mess now.
I got some down on me, but I tell you, it was eye-opening going around knocking on doors at all my district.
All right. Is there a motion that we come from executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy is their second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Sees is their discussion. All in favor by a show of hands. Opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously. There be any motions to be made associated with our executive session? Hearing none. I do have, I just checked with Joanie to make sure this was legal and proper. We had a Scribner's error on some of our minutes from the October 5th meeting. The meeting minutes indicate that Bonnie Shealy appeared to us as a volunteer from the Humane Society. He was actually a volunteer at the animal shelter. And she would, those are very different organizations and she would like the minutes reflected to say that. So I would like to make a motion that we amend those as a Scribner's error to show that Ms. Shealy was a volunteer at the animal shelter. Second by Mr. Shealy is their discussion. Hearing none. All by show of hands. Opposed likewise. That carries unanimously. Thank everyone for helping us fix that. Requests from acting county administrator.
About anything at the moment other than we will have the Korean American Day at Newbury College's education building. That is this Saturday at 5:00 and all council has been invited.
Okay. Any requests from council will go this way this time. Reverend Curry?
None, sir.
Mr. Reader?
I'd just like to say the MLK program turned out great. We had over 300 people marching through Newbury County. So that was a real, real eye-opening experience.
Wow. That's awesome. And we appreciate your efforts and all that you do to make those things possible too, Mr. Reader. Ms. Airwood?
No, nothing.
Mr. Sees? Ms. Shealy?
I will, I hate to miss the Korean Day. I will be on a cruise. Unfortunately, I won't make that tonight. I hope you all enjoy it.
Yes, sir.
I'll also be out of town in Colorado.
And I'll be in New York. Mr. Hip?
I'll be in Newbury. I'm not going on a cruise and I'm not gonna be in Colorado.
We're trying to get one, catch up to you.
I had already reached out to Mr. Hip. There's like a minute blurb from somebody from council and I have a wedding at 3 o'clock that afternoon. And normally I would just not go, but I'm the officiant and so. Like for me to show up. Anything else, sir? Okay. All right. So just a reminder of that and I appreciate Mr. Hip standing in so that I can be a part of a wedding that's been planned for for a while. I did have a request and that is listed as one of our future meetings. The January 30th meeting for Public Safety Committee needs to be rescheduled. That is the night of the Governmental Association meeting. And so let's reschedule that so that everybody who would like to attend that may attend. The next county council meeting will be February 1st at 6:00 PM. Newbury County Council meeting February 15th at 6:00 PM. Executive Committee meeting February 27th at 6:00 PM. And then the committee assignments were sent, but apparently I was Mr. Shealy. So I apologize to you and I will get that to you right away, sir. So if you have any questions or concerns about committee assignments, please let me know. I'll do anything I can to accommodate anybody to make things work for you. So hearing nothing else, is it?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
I had talked to Les earlier about, when I was talking to Hugh Gray about appointment to the Westview facility. He gave me some names, but also he asked me about some opioid money because they're getting ready to lose some state funds. And he was, didn't want to lose one of their staff people if he could get some money for this. So I said, you'll probably have to come talk to council. So is the thing he'll have to do is sign up or call in to be put on the agenda to come to the next meeting?
Actually, there's gonna be some paperwork and direct funding with grant. It's not really a grant. The money's gonna be here, but you're gonna have to do documentation as to why you can get the opioid money. So if you would get him in touch with our county attorney or acting county administrator, they could get him help with the paperwork.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Shealy's. She tried, sir. She tried, but she didn't get it. We'll give Ms. Airwood the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We stand adjourned.